Alrighty, let's go and get started. We'll hear from Eagle Market Street Development Corporation, Evelyn Charities, Green Opportunities, and Manah Food Bank will be number four spot.
Good afternoon, Chairman Gant, Commissioners, thank you for this awesome opportunity to be before you. Eagle Market Streets Development Corporation is an economic engine that develops people, property, and businesses. And we're here today asking for a $50,000 request for our Workforce Development Program, Block by Block Industries. Block by Block meets the county's objective for job creation and workforce development. The things I would most like you to know about Block by Block is that it creates great jobs such as CAD design, quality management, technical operational skills, and leadership development. We're just asking that in this request that our balance sheet be funded as opposed to our income statement. Ultimately, our satisfied customers will provide the stability and the sustainability that we seek. We would like you to know that we're really striving to become the change that we want to see as it relates to small manufacturing and small business. Our program offers local jobs for local residents for a local economic impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Evelyn Charities, Mr. Murdoch, Green Opportunities, Manah, and Mount Zion Community Development.
Commissioner Gant, Commissioners, thank you again for having us up here. Just wanted to again say thank you for the help and the constant support with everything Evelyn does, but I don't think there's a program that we have at Evelyn Charities that we're more proud of or has more of an impact in this community, both with lives and economic impact as the graduation initiative. I'm going to introduce our Executive Director and a great partnership with Buncombe County Schools and Buncombe County, Kaye Lamb. And it's again, it's such a great honor for us to be part of that, to know that the decisions these young people make to stay in school a lot of times is based on whether or not they have to go to work, whether or not they have the right clothes to wear, whether or not they even have a pair of glasses. And that's one of the things that Evelyn does with the graduation initiative. And seeing a 49 percent reduction in dropout rate in the past seven years is just phenomenal. And again, thank you all so much for that, okay?
Thank you, Bill. I won't spend time talking about our numerous programs, but obviously, the graduation initiative focuses on working with students that are at risk of dropping out of school. And we do whatever it takes to reach those students and their families and work with them and help them reach that goal of graduation. You should have received a packet of information for your purview that focuses on the impact of your investment in the past, the impact of that investment on our community. So I want to focus on that in the time that's left. In terms of our Buncombe County Schools' four-year cohort graduation rate, and that includes students who enter as ninth graders and in four years, complete the requirements for graduation and receive a diploma. During the inception of the graduation initiative program and funding from the county commissioners, we've seen a 10-point increase in that rate from 73.4 to the 83.2 that we realized in the year 2013-2014. As Bill said, we're very proud of that improvement. In terms of actual students, if you look at the next chart, it points out that in 2006-07, we lost 452 students in Buncombe County as a result of dropping out of school. That's a hard economic impact in terms of negativity for Buncombe County. During the term and the work of the graduation initiative program, and certainly, we don't do this alone, but I do think we spearhead the effort to reduce that number of students. And in 2013, that year of graduation, we saw a 49 percent decrease down to 229 students. That's 229 students too many. Unfortunately, because of our success, we don't often qualify for those large corporate grants that focus on communities who have very high dropout rates. So your investment and the grant that you provide allows us to continue to work toward what we want to reach, which is a 90 percent graduation rate for Buncombe County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Lamb or Mr. Murdoch?
Thank you.
Great program. Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Green Opportunities and then Manah and Mount Zion. Manah and Mount Zion will have five minutes each because they have multiple requests to us. Yes, ma'am?
All right. Thank you all so much for having us here today. I'm Kendra Pemblynn, the interim Executive Director for Green Opportunities. We are so appreciative of all the vital past and continued support that Buncombe County provides us, which allow us to have our really incredible and impactful programs. Buncombe County strengthens quality of life in our community by taking fiscally and socially responsible actions to ensure the prosperity of future generations. And Green Opportunities shares this mission. We support this mission by helping youth and adults living in poverty get and keep jobs that support their families and improve community and environmental health. Specifically, the Go Kitchen Ready Training Program is designed to prepare low-income, unemployed, and underemployed Buncombe County residents for jobs in the local restaurant and hospitality industry.
Hello, my name is Chef Liam, and I run Kitchen Ready Program. I want to repeat the gratitude for the county commissioners for their time today and their continued support of Go and the Edison Center. That's our permanent location. I was there day one of Kitchen Ready, and I'm proud to stand here two and a half years later. Currently, we are serving 61 people a year in training, but we are serving hundreds of people in our thriving commercial kitchen. We operate from eight in the morning until eight at night, and we're building businesses that will make our program self-sustainable. We have 50 cents over our projected outcomes of graduate wage, getting good jobs for our graduates that pay 1075 or more. We have our first two graduates enrolled in AB Tech Culinary Program. We have the strongest curriculum ever, including a life skills curriculum and Chefs Tuesdays that actually brings local chefs to the center to work with students directly. We serve lunch daily to 65 to 80 people or more, and many of which do not have access to healthy food. These people receive free meals that are coaxed and emphasize nutrition, locally-produced food, and scratch-made ingredients, and all the money generated in that kitchen goes right to the students that are in the program. We have placed 80 percent of our last class in jobs, and they got those jobs because they knew what they were doing. Kitchen Ready is working. I really believe that Kitchen Ready aligns with the goals of the county because we provide robust job training in the food industry that is exploding. We identify and reduce barriers to helping people get and keep jobs that they deserve. And we have increased the availability of education and locally-produced foods to low-income individuals by creating a one-of-a-kind kitchen that is based in the practices of community service and integrity. Thank you.
Thank you.
With only just a few minutes, my name is Hanan Shabazz, and I'd just like to say thank you for all the help that you have given us. And for those of you who have come to our kitchen and enjoyed our meals, it is fantastic. Our Kitchen Ready program provides food every day, and we'd like for each and every one of you to come and see for yourself exactly what we do. We're there every day, and we try to show everybody how to eat to live and not live to eat so that they can live a long time. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any questions? You're also doing some shop work, I think, when I went out there. You're doing some furniture and teaching some other skills besides food now.
We do have another training curriculum that we're not seeking funding for from Buncombe County, but we always take donations.
Spoken like a good executive director.
Raise your hand if you take donations out there. Just kidding, sorry. Thank you. Okay, Manah has two programs, and Mount Zion also has two programs. And then after those, we'll do five minutes here, and then we have one Youth at a Time after that. Maybe Mr. Ray's here somewhere.
Good afternoon, and thank you. My name is Cindy Threlkeld. I'm the Executive Director of Manah Food Bank. And we do have two proposals to present today. One is on food distribution, and the second is for our FNS Food Stamp Outreach Program. Both of these programs are strategies to address food insecurity in Buncombe County. One in seven people in the county live in a household where they don't have continuous access to the food that they need for a healthy life. 25 percent of those are children. That obviously can impact both their attention in school, and it can also create permanent cognitive development problems. But let me talk first about food distribution. Manah works through a network of 110 organizations to distribute food throughout the county. Many of those are names that you would recognize. I won't mention them because I think you received a handout that lists those for you. Manah's role is to acquire the food through donations from retail outlets, from food manufacturers, from produce packaging companies, basically from anywhere that we can get it. And we have a warehouse and racking program so that we receive the food, we put it into inventory, and then we're able to distribute it either by having the agencies come to pick it up from us, or we deliver it to their door. Last year, working together with our partners, we were able to distribute 4,250,000 pounds of food in Buncombe County, and that's the equivalent of 3.3 million meals for people in need. That's a 15 percent increase from what we did the year before. Our goal is not just to distribute more food, it's to distribute more healthy food. 780,000 pounds of what we distributed was in the form of fresh produce. The success of this program depends on collaboration. We have over 7,000 volunteers who collectively, through the hours they contributed, gave the equivalent of 32 full-time equivalents last year. I want to give one specific example of collaboration that I really think is quite beautiful, and that's the collaboration that we have with the Buncombe County Community Navigators. It's a program that I know the county funds and supports, and it's, the reason I like it is because all Manah has to do is provide the food. The community navigators come to Manah, they select the produce that they feel is going to go best in their neighborhood. They have a corps of volunteers, they set it up like a farmer's market, they bring in outside things like blood pressure screening and other services, and it turns that community into a health fair that, to me, I think is a beautiful example of what collaboration can do. If Manah can strive to be a resource to the community by procuring as much food as we possibly can, and by collaborating with organizations like that, we can really make a difference in our community. So our $30,000 proposal for food distribution is to continue and expand this program. Our second proposal is for FNS, or Food Stamp Outreach. The goal of this work is to assist people who are eligible for benefits but who may either have barriers to being able to apply or not understand that they're eligible. If we can make that connection, it can make a huge difference to a family who's struggling to get by in a low-paid job or part-time work, or who may not be able to find employment for themselves. Manah can provide the support, I'm sorry, Manah cannot provide the support through the food bank to fill that gap. It's just not possible to do that. By helping people get onto food stamps, that really stretches the dollar and really addresses that issue of food insecurity. Our FNS Outreach Program complements the work of the Buncombe County Department of Social Services, and we work in very close relationship with them. We're able to send outreach workers and train volunteers into pantries and community organizations and meal programs, locations where they can come into contact with people who maybe because of mountain pride, or because they don't understand the application process, or are reluctant to step forward, can help connect them to the services that they really urgently need, especially if they have children in the household. Those completed applications then go to the Department of Social Services for the official review and approval process. So we're working in conjunction with, rather than duplicating what they do. This can be a great help to seniors with mobility problems and for others who are having challenges accessing those sorts of benefits. This year, with the help of the requested $20,000 in funds from Buncombe County, we anticipate that Manah will be able to assist 1,400 people with applications for benefits that they're eligible to receive. We appreciate your consideration of both of our proposals and for your support last year for the food distribution program, and we look forward to our continued work together. Thank you.
Any questions for Cindy? Thank you so much. Next, we'll hear from Belinda and Mount Zion Community Development. Ms. Grant?
Good afternoon. I extend greetings to Commissioner Gant, all of the Commissioners, to Ms. Mendy Stone and Ms. Wonder Green. I bring greetings on behalf of Mount Zion Community Development. We've been in existence since 1997, and our first program is for Project Empower, which stands for Education Means Power, and is one of Buncombe County's teen pregnancy prevention initiatives. We were blessed about two years ago to receive a call from Buncombe County Health and Human Services to go through training with Buncombe County to implement Making Proud Choices to youth and foster care, and it was a blessing. We collaborate with the Asheville City School System, Asheville Middle School, Asheville High School, and we, this year, well, I'll leave that for Karen, but we are blessed to work with our teens, and the goal is to reduce pregnancy, HIV, and STDs, or now sexually transmitted infections. And this is one of the bestest outreach workers in the world, Karen Monroe.
So as stated, my name is Karen Monroe, and I'm the outreach worker for Project Empower. So the goal of Project Empower is to reduce the teen pregnancy STD and HIV/AIDS rate in Buncombe County. By word of mouth and strengthening our partnerships with Asheville City School System, we have went from serving 65 last fiscal year to 129 students this fiscal year. Through implementing the evidence-based educational models, reducing the risk, and making proud choices, while also stressing the importance of goal-setting and positive decision-making skills, we aim to impact these rates in our county. We host sessions that include parental involvement. We also have enrichment activities involving community partnerships to expand knowledge of these topics and also enhance leadership and team-building skills. We do college tours and offer case management services, so that's about Project Empower. Thank you.
Want to introduce our next program that we are requesting for funding. We thank you for, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for pass funding for the Project NAF program, which stands for Nurture and Asheville and Area Families. It is Buncombe County's Healthy Beginnings Project. It used to be called Minority Infant Mortality Reduction Project, and when we learned to say the name, they changed it. But now, it's a Healthy Beginnings Project to work with African-American pregnant women so that our babies can see their first year of life and beyond. Our program has been cited as a national program, it's been one of the top seven programs in the United States at that time by the U.S. Bureau of Exchange. We continue to be a state model. We were asked to serve on the North Carolina Child Fraternity Task Force and recommended by Belinda Pettiford, the head of the Women's Health Division, to have our article in the Carolina Press on last year. We thank you very much.
Project NAF provides advocacy and support for African-American women during pregnancy up until the child is 24 months of age. And we do this by case management services and providing onsite workshops where we are bringing out professionals in our community to talk and educate our women about breastfeeding, folic acid consumption, healthy weight, and exercise, and to talk to them about the importance of going to their prenatal appointments. And we also address any barriers to care. We also have a component where we're talking about smoking cessation and referring out our program participants to agencies and other support groups that can help them with reduction or cessation of smoking. Project NAF has been around for 16 years, and we are happy to serve 40 participants each fiscal year. And at the end of each fiscal year, we have the opportunity to have served more than 40 women. And this is a quote from Unnatural Causes, which is a documentary that was cited as a national model and used to educate people about infant mortality. "As a country, we pay an enormous price for our high rate of premature and low birth weight babies. Preterm birth is the second-leading cause of death for infants. If they're lucky enough to survive, many face a lifetime of learning and medical problems. Studies show that prematurity increases the risk for hypertension, diabetes, artery disease, and the high cost of medical care beginning the moment they're born. One-month stay in neonatal intensive care unit is an average of $68,000 a month." So we are happy that we have the Project NAF program, and we want to continue to serve African-American women in Buncombe County.
Okay, any questions for the Project Empower or Project NAF applications? Thank you, ladies. Next, we'll hear from One Youth at a Time, then we will hear from Asheville Symphony, Project Lighten Up, and the Asheville-Buncombe Regional Sports Authority. Reverend Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to this distinguished county board, Madam Manager, and to this very fine, distinguished administration, but also all others. I'm Elsie Ray, CEO of One Youth at a Time Incorporated, which has been in service for over 21 years. I must say from all of us and even our children, we must say thank you to this, one of the greatest counties in North Carolina, and I'm familiar with most of them, a great county that works well with others, but also gives so much to its people. One Youth at a Time, we try to be true, seriously true, to the county's sustainability objectives as well as the goals. We have recognized over the last 10 months of this fiscal year, we have seen that 98 percent of our students is in order to advance to the next level or to graduate from high school. That is exceptional. But not only that, but our outreach ministries, it is very dear to us, and especially dear to me as a clergy person. We must be about a higher power's business in supporting our youth and our children, and most of our children there comes from single parents. But one thing that we are proud of, we have had the opportunity, and myself personally, to collaborate with many of these great programs through Buncombe County and through our state. I'm a preacher, and I'm cutting off. I'm just preaching there. But we are very proud to have the support of the churches. Without the churches, we feel that we cannot be successful. But with the churches and with all others, we can see great results. Thank you, county.
Thank you, Reverend Ray. Next, we'll hear Asheville Symphony, Project Lighten Up, Buncombe Regional Sports Commission, and Big Ivy.
Good afternoon. My name is David Whitehill. I'm the Executive Director of the Asheville Symphony. When the Asheville Symphony first made its home in the Asheville Civic Center in 1974, the symphony was a young organization, only 14 years old. At that time, more than 40 years ago, the staff comprised one part-time manager, one part-time conductor, the musicians were volunteers, and the budget was only $40,000. That new home in the Civic Center was designed as rehearsal space only. Today, almost a half a century later, the symphony still occupies that same space, but it's no longer used as rehearsal space. The orchestra, now professional and paid, rehearses on the stage of Thomas Wolfe Auditorium. Our budget this year is $1.6 million, putting us in the top 12 percent of orchestras in this country. And we continue to grow. This past year, actually past month, we launched a new festival called Asheville Amadeus that in a week alone served over 20,000 people through 50 events in 30 venues. Over 80 percent of the events free, serving everyone from newborns to people celebrating later in life. The purpose was not only to bring business and visibility to our collaborative arts partners, but it was to fill hotel rooms, fill restaurants, showcase our galleries and our shops, and all in a time that is a little slow in Asheville. This was by design. We wanted to create something that would add to and not compete with existing attractions. We are a regional symphony. We bring visitors from every county in western North Carolina and many parts of the state, and actually from other states. Our festival alone drew people from Australia, London, Montreal, New York, Arkansas, and Georgia, and many other places in the United States. One of the things we're focused on, in an effort to align ourselves with the Buncombe County Sustainability Plan, the Asheville Symphony brings music education programs to every single publicly-educated child in Asheville City and Buncombe County Schools in grades two, three, four, and five. Our newest initiative, an Elsystem-inspired after-school program, is reaching some of the most disadvantaged youth with the idea of music teaching life skills. With all this exciting growth and change, there is one thing that has remained constant for almost half a century, our office space. In that regard, almost nothing has changed. Our staff workspaces are perched on rehearsal risers, our marketing manager and development director share one large room with timpani, gong, pianos, boxes, print materials, and a music library. It is our time to align our work environment with our artistic excellence and our contribution to the region. Best relax our professionalism. We respectfully request your consideration of this request. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Next, we'll hear Project Lighten Up, and then Ben in the Sports Commission will have five minutes for two, and then Big Ivy will have five minutes for two requests. Project Lighten Up.
Good afternoon. I'm Pastor Hardaway, Executive Director of Project Lighten Up. I appreciate your allowing us to be here and to talk about our program. Project Lighten Up is a summer day camp, is a community summer day camp that also extends into an after-school program. John Hopkins did a study that said that, it said that low-income families and low-income students, they lose quite a majority of their reading abilities during the summer. And it also showed that all students lose at least two semesters of their math equivalency during the summer break. And so we're designed to eliminate the summer learning loss. We feel and we believe that in order to shrink the achievement gap, you've got to eliminate the summer learning loss, and that's what Project Lighten Up does. We incorporate and we include and integrate education and recreation into our daily activities. We do reading, math, personal development, arts and craft, and recreation. We collaborated with UNCA to do the Teaching Kitchen, also work in their Rhodes Garden. We've collaborated with ABIP to do bicycle safety with the YMI and Opera Lyrics, with the Lyrics Opera. Our kids actually learn to do math with music. And so again, we're the only summer camp that incorporates education and recreation together. We service five kindergartens through the eighth grade, from Mondays through Fridays, from 7:30 to 6:00 p.m. We provide breakfast, lunch, and snack. Thursdays are the educational field trips. Fridays are the fun field trips like swimming, skating, and bowling. And on Thursday, the educational field trips are like the nature center. We also visit the Asheville Police Department, Buncombe County Sheriff Department, so that we can build those community relationships with our young people, so that the police and sheriff see our young people as people, as young. And our young people will see that they can trust and build that relationship with our police department and with the sheriff department as well. We've made significant strides. Project Lighten Up is not something that's just started. It was actually started by the IMA some years ago, but then it became dormant, and we've been in existence since 2008. And so, we think our community is important. We receive funding from you, from funding from Wells Fargo, but also, we ask our community to participate. We want you all to know, we want everybody to know that our community is interested in investing into our children. So we do an annual radiothon, which we ask our community to support, the community summer day camp. And we get the support from churches, local businesses, and individual donors, and so we're doing a great work. One of the things I think I'll highlight, we had, most kids at five or six-year-olds don't know how to tie their shoe because they use Velcro. We had a five-year-old that taught a six-year-old to tie their shoe, and we made it a goal to teach our kindergartens to learn to tie their shoe. And so again, appreciate your time. Thank you.
Any questions, Pastor Hardaway? Thank you.
Welcome.
Next, we'll hear from Ben in the Regional Sports Commission, has two FPHs, Southern Conference, and Economic Impact and Wellness. Ben?
Yeah, good afternoon. Thanks for allowing me to be here today. It's an honor. I thought I'd start by talking about the Southern Conference Basketball and Wrestling Championships. And I wanted to start with sharing a little excerpt from an article that ran in a Chattanooga newspaper after the Chattanooga men's basketball team lost. And it says, "For basketball fans, Asheville is perfect. For the fans that make the trip, it's a celebration. The US Lio Center, where the tournament is held, is in the heart of downtown Asheville. If you've ever been to Asheville, you know what that means. Wonderful variety of restaurants, bars, art galleries, music venues, craft breweries, and anything else you could want in a growing mountain community. It's hard to have a bad time in Asheville, even if your team loses." That's the bad press we're getting from the Southern Conference Tournament. You can imagine what the team says when they win. They're thrilled with Asheville, and it's been a great part of our community. Many of you know, because you've all been part of our community for a while, that, you know, the Southern Conference called Asheville Home in the 80s and early 90s. It left after, you know, the facility deteriorated and the community support sort of dried up. In 2009 and 10, a group of community leaders boldly said, "We can bring this back. We can improve our facility, we can get this back to our community. It's important for it to be here." And in 2011, the Southern Conference returned to a renovated facility with And in 2011, the Southern Conference returned to a renovated facility with great community leadership and support, and Buncombe County's been a big part of that, and we want for that to continue. We competed, completed our first three-year commitment with the Southern Conference in 2013. They renewed their agreement through 2017 with us as a community. And really, the tournament has blossomed into much more than basketball, and I think that's what I'd like to instill in you today, that it's really four or five days with basketball, but a lot of other things going on. The, the schools, they come and they want to be part of our community. They, they love coming here. Their mascots visit our children at, at the local hospital. The cheerleaders go with them. The coaches, they put on clinics for low-income kids while they're here. We have wonderful community events. We have a downtown dribble event. We give away 500 basketballs to kids in need in our community. Anyone that can make it to Paksquare Park on a Saturday morning, we give them 500 basketballs, a T-shirt, and a free ticket to come to a game. We also partner with Buncombe County Schools, City of Asheville Schools, and Henderson County Schools to allow those students to come to a game for free. This is likely the only time some of these students will be able to experience something like a college sporting event in their lives. We want to plant that seed of, you know, maybe I can play college basketball, maybe I can go to college. This sounds like, this is a great environment, I want to be part of that, and we really enjoy that partnership. So we're asking, you know, the, the, the beauty of the Southern Conference Basketball Tournament is the time of year. It's early March. It's a time of year where we're slow as a community. We could use some additional economic impact, and it delivers. $4 million every year. It's been four years. Math is pretty easy. $16 million from what is a basketball and wrestling tournament, and we're thrilled to see that continue. Just transitioning to the Sports Commission, we are small. It's me and one other person on staff. We have a small budget, a little under $200,000. But we are lean, we're efficient, and we're bold. We want to do big things. Our mission is simple, to bring large-scale sporting events to our community, one that will inspire our local people to participate in them, participate in a marathon, a 5K, 10K, get healthy, get active, and events that are going to have an economic impact on our community. It's, it's really the, a great story of partnership. It was formed with the City of Asheville, Buncombe County, and the Torreson Development Authority. And to this day, those are our three primary funding sources. We raise a bunch of money on our own as well, but those three resources are a great sense of partnership. We, right now, just completed a strategic plan, which I think we gave you a copy of, hopefully, and right now, we have an economic impact of about $13 million annually to our community. Before the strategic plan is finished in 2017, we want that to be $20 million of economic impact. We are on the right trajectory. We are doing good work, and we simply want to continue to see the support of Buncombe County for our efforts. That's all.
Okay, Ben. Thank you. Any questions?
I have a, I have a real quick question.
Sure.
And I'm sure there's probably a longer answer, but short version. My understanding is the, the TDA funding is for, that they traditionally, I understand they can't fund events and things like that, they have to fund kind of hard costs, bricks and mortar type stuff. So how does TA fund the organization in light of some of the restrictions around how the hotel occupancy funds have to be used?
Well, that's the 1% fund that you're referencing to is the Product Development Fund. There's the other, I think, 3% that goes into a general marketing budget that is used to recruit, recruit all sorts of things and tourists and visitors to our community. So our funding comes from, from that source.
From, from market, from marketing.
From the marketing dollars, not the bricks and mortar 1%. That is strictly for capital ventures.
Thanks.
Is there a wide definition of marketing? I mean, is there, or is it pretty specific?
As far as the legislation in the state?
No, about how it's defined. I mean, is it defined of, once something's here, the advertising goes into that, or just the attraction?
You mean the CVA, the TDA's funding?
Mm-hmm.
Primarily, it's bringing things into the community. It's generally not used for things that, once they're here, promoting those for, say, attendance at, you know, a festival, an event, something like that. Most, all of that money is really used, you know, a lot of it goes to the advertising that they do throughout the region to bring tourists here to our community, but it also goes to, you know, developing ad campaigns and some strategic partnerships as well.
I just have one potential request, which is, and you probably are already doing it, but you, you've probably been here a good deal of the day, and, you know, I kind of hear, I've never been able to do the Saturday dribble thing, but it always sounded really fun, but, you know, there seems like to be such great matches here. I mean, just the, the Project Lighten Up, I don't know if y'all have ever done that, but, so, kind of reaching out to some of these other community-funded partners that we've got, I know you're probably already doing that, but I would just kind of put a special pitch in for, for our team here, so.
Certainly, and that's great. And this year, one exciting partnership was with Eblen. We launched a Headlock on Hunger campaign and a Hoops Against Hunger campaign, and if Bill left, but I forget the exact statistics, but he raised thousands of dollars to support the Home for the Holidays project through Eblen and a lot of food donations as well, and I forget the exact number of tons it was, but it was a couple. So we're, we're proud to, and that's really how we are effective with a two-person staff. You know, it's really the volunteer and the community relationships that we have that allow us to do what we do.
Okay, any other questions? Great. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Big Ivy, who has two projects. Might hear from Big Ivy? All right, that's five minutes. Somebody else?
No, or, or not?
Or not. Let's see, I think we've heard from HelpMate, is that right, Madam Clerk?
A second.
So now we have Asheville-Buncombe Institute of Parity Achievement and Buncombe County Schools.
HelpMate, too.
Oh, HelpMate, I'm sorry, come on up.
I'll be happy to take Big Ivy's.
We can, we can auction it off.
I know you've heard from April Burgess Johnson, our Executive Director, already, and she's in California this week at the Family Justice Center Conference, and so I wanted just to say a few things about HelpMate. As most of you know, HelpMate's been around for almost 35 years, and we provide a variety of services to victims of domestic violence, including a 24/7 hotline counseling group and individual domestic violence education classes, emergency shelter, court advocacy, case management, and service coordination, and professional trainings in community education. One of the things that we're seeing is just unprecedented numbers, and with, even though that the Comprehensive Buncombe County Domestic Violence Plan is not fully enacted yet, we are still seeing numbers that we have never seen pretty much in the history of HelpMate. We have a 92.5% increase in our hotline calls over last year, and we're on target for a two-year increase of about 165%. And about 25% of our clients in shelter have really multiple barriers to recovery, such as unemployment, mental health issues, substance abuse issues, language barriers, et cetera. And we didn't used to see so much of that, and that's really been an area where we have really increased case coordination, case management, and service coordination, just helping those women and men come back into the community. And primarily, we're talking about women. We do serve about 14% men. We serve men and women with the common denominator being victims of domestic violence. And so we're really, your, your funding will help us increase our case management, the depth, depth of case management that we're providing, and the breadth as well. We'll provide about services to probably plus or minus 2,000 victims of domestic violence in the coming year, and take probably about 2,300 hotline calls and so forth. And so we really appreciate your support over the years, and while we truly believe that the Buncombe County Comprehensive Domestic Violence Plan is going to decrease domestic violence in our community, we're going to see a surge of people reaching out to us, I think, before that levels off, and so we're planning, doing everything we can to increase our response to those women and men and children. Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Just a, just a comment for Ms. Stone, for the future, for my benefit. There's so many, there's several this day that we've heard that are reaching out and trying to meet the need of domestic violence. And with the Family Justice Center and some of the things that are doing, I don't want that, that education to stop for me as a, as a Commissioner, to continue to understand how these work together when it comes to, you know, meeting the need and funding and, and information such as that. So the more information I can receive on that, the better for me.
We just did an updated version, so I'll get that, too, about both our investments and the connectivity between them.
And we're working a lot collaborating with many of those groups that are working in domestic violence, so we're not working in a, in a vacuum. We're working and reaching out to all of the different groups, offering our services, and also looking at how we can work together to decrease it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Asheville-Buncombe Institute of Parity Achievement and Buncombe County Schools, and then we will take a five-minute break. Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon. My name is Joanna Greer-McKeaton, and I'm the Executive Director for ABIPPA, which is the Asheville-Buncombe Institute of Parity Achievement. I'm very tempted to have everyone do an activity break right now, when you wake up. However, in 2014, ABIPPA provided and collaborated in 135 health education sessions and events in churches, community centers, and in individual homes, resulting in 2,771 persons served and the case management of 100 individuals. In addition, our collaboration with Buncombe County Health and Human Services and Buncombe County Service Foundation allowed us to expand our reach with the addition of two community service navigators, who provided direct navigation services to an additional 341 unduplicated clients. In addition to our normal outreach education efforts, this collaboration allowed us to expand our services to the residents and housing by facilitating 22 of those fresh fruit and vegetable pop-up markets that Cindy alluded to earlier. This allowed us to serve 349 households and impacting 2,388 individuals. That is a lot for a staff of two community service navigators, right? So additional funding will allow us to retain an additional community service navigator and increase our time of our current community service navigators and our nurse. ABIPPA's community service navigators provide support to the following communities: D-Review Apartments, Livingston, Erskine, Walton Street Apartments, and the Shiloh Community. We connect citizens and communities with Health and Human Services and other resources available in Buncombe County. However, we go deeper. The community service navigators trained by ABIPPA are unique because we equip them with the extra layer training of being community health workers also. Through this program, we are able to address social determinants of health in addition to direct health that is impacted by people simply trying to survive. We meet people where they are by going door-to-door and making ourselves available in the community settings. We don't wait for the clients to come to the ABIPPA office, we go to them where they are. So again, we thank you so much for your support because of the 341 unduplicated clients, they actually were able to address 428 of the pathways that were there, and 150 of those pathways were actually completed, and again, with two community service navigators. And so with our partnership with the county and the community service navigators, it has helped us to facilitate the pop-up markets, but an additional layer in our pop-up markets is that we do community health screenings, and we also integrate the winches application process so that people are actually connected to that service before they reach an emergency. Because again, Pastor Hardaway will let you know, I would say that we need to make sure that we're having a sense of urgency before an emergency, so they're already on track to be served before it's over. So again, thank you for your support. Without you, we couldn't do it.
Thank you, Joanna. Any questions for ABIPPA? Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Buncombe County Schools.
It's a hard act to follow and be the person standing between you and break. Anna Austin, I serve as the graduation advocate. The Career Academy has been in existence at Irwin High School for the past seven years. Each year, we recruit 35 new freshmen, and we work with the remaining 90 to 110 upper classmen. The goal each year is 100% graduation. However, knowing that students have barriers they must work through, students may take longer to reach this goal or choose an alternative path towards graduation. The current success rate of the students in our program is approximately 85%, which is higher than that of the state graduation rate. The key is to show our students the bigger picture and expose them to the opportunities within our community through our partners, Goodwill, Biltmore Estate, AB Tech, Arvato, the Asheville Mall, and we plan to expand to local manufacturing companies this summer. Students in the program also gain beneficial workplace skills as they participate in hospitality camp at the Biltmore Estate throughout the summer. This paid work experience allows our students to earn a paycheck, which will assist themselves or their families financially. This hands-on experience is valuable to our students. It allows them to connect their skills earned in the classroom to those real-world experiences. We feel that this is a good solution to the soft skills gap and good for economic development. I'd like to leave you with this story. I met Dee in the fall of his junior year, not while passing him through the hallways. I met him due to the number of teacher concerns, his father's concern that he had with how well he was dealing with the loss, the recent loss of his grandfather, and the number of minor referrals he had earned himself due to his skull addiction. When I met with him after multiple attempts, I felt like I had lost him. I received a phone call from his father informing me that, yes, Dee was choosing to drop out. I decided to give one final pitch, and I tossed out this plan. Buckle down in your remaining classes, attend twilight school to earn your missing credits, participate in hospitality camp, and we'll give you a focus, and I promise you, we'll get on track to graduate early. He chuckled and said, "Yeah." The first day students were allowed to pick up schedules, he was one of the first 10 to show up. Many people said, "Have you ever picked up a schedule in your entire high school career?" His response was, "No, I need to see if Ms. Austin is a liar or if she tells the truth." After getting his schedule, he realized that this plan would work better for him, and I'm pleased to say to you today, he did just that. He graduated in, in January as an early graduate. We got him involved in the Goodwill Reset Program so he can earn his certificate, AB Tech in Welding, because his plan is to take over the thriving family business in Lester. Thank you, Commissioners, for your dedication to our students and for your support and commitment to this program, which not only allows our students to graduate, to be successful, even to those students who didn't think it was possible.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Austin? Thank you. Okay, we will take a five-minute break. Let's be back in five minutes.